I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. Everybody stand and say allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Maravka here.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
All right, in your packet there is minutes from the November 25th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, maintain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Parker.
Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Maravka.
Yes.
And what? Yes. Next in your packet was the accounts payable and payroll. Payroll for the pay period ending November 30th was $50,006.2633. Accounts payable, general fund $40,003.2193, motor fuel tax fund $12,007.3310, and capital improvement fund of $178.48. The total for all those funds is $53,0233.51. Any questions on the bills? If not, maintain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Maravka, to pay the bills.
Ham.
Yes.
Maravka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
And public comment, there is no public present. Reports of committees, village administrative report.
I don't need report.
And I don't believe there's a police chief report, no engineer report. We did have a public works meeting last Friday, just a couple of highlights. We went over, we had representative from ComEd come, I guess, look at our lighting. They have a program where they contract with an outside contractor to replace lighting with more energy efficient LED lighting. Supposedly the payback on that for us would be like two years. Supposedly ComEd picks up 60% of the program and we pay 40%. So it would be an outlay for us, I believe it was around $6,000, $7,000, something about that.
Correct.
And supposedly our payback would be about two and a half years. So something that we're going to consider possibly put in the budget for next year. The next thing we talked about is the village hall did have some hail damage, like every place else in town. We've been, I guess there's been some discussion with our insurance company and so I think that's something that the village hall will be getting a new roof sometime next year. The biggest thing we talked about was update on the new DPW building. Basically, the build out that we had approved is pretty much finished. The only thing really that's left to do is put in landscaping. And we were going to talk to the county and see if you could get a temporary occupancy permit.
No, Bob's working on that with the contractor.
So we're hoping that we could at least get a temporary occupancy permit before the spring, before we put the landscaping in. So that's the good news. The bad news is that we're about $10,000 over what we budgeted. And we still need to figure out possibly how to make the shop have a little heat so that they can work on their equipment in the winter. There is heat in the floor, but as of right now is not zoned from the office. So it would be pretty cost prohibitive to heat that in the manner that it's at right now. So we are hoping that we can zone that heat possibly for relatively inexpensive. Other options, so we talked about we're insulating the shop. You know, we talked about bringing, making it a lower ceiling in there so we don't have as much space to heat. And the other option was possibly just making one bay, you know, cover one bay and insulate one bay where they could pull a truck in and work on it in a heated area. So those are kind of the options on their wish list out there. They want, you know, eventually Bob would love to have a salt, what do you call it?
Dome.
Salt dome out there. But, you know, I don't know if that's in the budget. So anyway, just, just like you the update, did I cover that pretty well? Anything else I missed?
I have a question. When you were talking about ComEd coming out.
Yes.
Was it these buildings' lights that you're talking about?
Right.
Is the main, the police department village hall in the garage of this whole complex?
And you were talking about recouping that money through what? We don't pay electricity on this building, it's in the franchise.
Oh, that's interesting.
Nobody realized that?
Nobody brought that up.
Okay, I was just wondering if maybe you wanted the lights. No, no.
That's fine.
The whole building, the police section and this section?
Yeah, the whole building.
Did they pay for anything else in town?
ComEd bill?
Yeah.
We paid the streetlight bills.
We pay the streetlight, yeah.
Right, but did they pay anything else besides just the village hall?
The blue building we used to own over by the railroad tracks? That's part of the franchise, I think.
Well, that's.
I have to think it through. It's been a long time since I coded the bills. I'd have to sit and think it through. But this building.
You should negotiate with ComEd and say, if you want to lower your.
Yeah, what's good incentive for us then to, you know, go to more efficient lighting.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions on hardwood public works? Any other committee reports?
I mean, other than we paid to replace these bones.
All right, there is no old business, new business. First is a motion to cancel our December 23 committee of the whole meeting and the regular village board meeting and to authorize the payment of the usual and customary accounts payable and payroll to be ratified following board meetings. So this is, you know, a lot of times in December if our meeting falls near the holiday, we elect to forego that meeting. So there's no discussion, maintain a motion.
Motion, second.
Then moved by trustee Parker, second by trustee Jones to cancel the December 23 committee of the whole and regular village board meeting and authorize payment of the usual customary accounts payable and payroll.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Item B ordinances and ordinance authorized in transfer of funds and supplemental appropriations for the corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2019 and ending March 31st, 2020 to allow lump sum payment with police pension fund in amount of $870,000. So this motion came out of our last AOC meeting where we, the $870,000 was approximately a shortfall that the village has had in our payments to the police pension fund over the last, since whenever the pension fund was enacted. So that's where that number came from. So Dave, I understand you had some comments you'd like to make on that.
This will catch some of you by surprise. From a standpoint, there's a timing issue here. The, as you probably are aware, the state passed consolidation of the funds, police and fire funds. I would anticipate, and the language from my quick read on it is that they've got 30 months to set up the structure. And when they put, so sometime between now and 30 months, they're going to put in a call to the individual funds. And the individual funds have, I think it's what I read on it, 60 days to transfer the funds from the local to the state account. It provides to make, that the local funds can maintain a working capital account to meet the. Basically, the state doesn't want to be doing the individual distribution. So they're going to allow to maintain a small working fund to meet the monthly obligations. So right now, the funds, these are rough numbers, a million and a half. We've got 150,000 stock market, the 10% level. To go over the 10%, which as discussed in the past, it takes to get to 2.5 million to be able to go to 40%. The state fund I would anticipate is going to be about a 50-50 stock bond mix, would be what I would anticipate, you know, 60-40, 40-60, you know, fluctuating somewhere in there. My, I don't like to time market from standpoint of, if the state wasn't involved in, you know, in this sometime in the next 30 months, I don't know whether that's going to be three months, 24 months. Is that if the board were to put the 870 and follow up, I think with around 570 or, you know, those numbers, we'd be over the 2.5 million. And therefore, the investment strategy could change. And I would be looking at doing a dollar cost average, probably in the $40,000 a month range into the stock market so that way we're not trying, we're not caught in the timing of a market, which would then put out probably 24 months or so before we reach the 40% level. If you put those funds in and it's, and we go with that strategy, 40,000, 50,000 into the market each month, and six months from now, the state says, okay, send it down, you'll have over a million dollars go in, basically into the stock market the day of the transfer. As it is, if you, and that's just a, to me, that's a risk. It's a higher risk than what I would like to see. It's out of my hands though. So one of the thoughts to consider, and this is really going to hit you by surprise, is to hold off in funding into the pension fund, earmark the funds, set them aside, identify them, whatever, so that way future board members, if this does drag out for a while, know that that's what the, you know, the intent and the purpose is. And here's why it is where we are. And then after the state transfer, and in effect have 500,000 go into the stock market overnight, then you can fund on a monthly basis and accomplish the dollar cost average into the stock market by funding into the pension fund on a monthly cycle versus in big lump sums and then get caught in, you know, positive, negative, just timing risk. And I, part of the market is not timing, it's being in it for the long haul and not trying to time it. So when I first read something on this, I heard, saw the 30-month time and thought maybe they were going to structure it that, you know, you'd have the local municipalities, you'd have 30 months to transfer their funds over. But the 30 months, as I read, my quick read on it was that it's 30 months in order for the state to get set up. It might be, my guess is it's probably going to be close to a year, but I doubt it will be much over that if not, because they're going to want to be able to say, we did it, you know, and get through. Like the governor has had a little troubles finding people to put on boards that don't have conflicts under new ethics and stuff, but that's another issue. But I think they'll get it put together and then there's going to be, you know, I think they'll get the capital call pretty close, you know, pretty quick after the setup. I don't know whether they're going to target large first to get the funds, whether they're going to approach it to the small funds first to, you know, get the base and then fill in with large. My guess is they'll probably just do a blanket, they really don't care. It appeared as though it might be a in-kind distribution, but I don't know. I don't think they're going, that's my intention. Those that they can do in-kind distribution, so probably do in-kind. Here's basically just transfer the ownership of the CDs. And because otherwise you also have this risk then of, you sell to the market today and when it's down and you, and you set, you get into the fund when it's up, you know, and that 30, 60-day window, that stuff is getting transferred, which is a risk. Now, from a Springfield standpoint, that really isn't, you know, the big picture doesn't matter. But the individual entities, it could have a pretty significant impact to an individual fund if they get caught in an upper down stroke. So it's, I know that's, and this is, I haven't actually, we didn't have a board meeting, the pension board. This is just me speaking. When we have the board meeting, I may get kicked off. No. From a strategy, I just, it's just, it's a timing risk. For something for you to consider, because it's out of, it's going to be out of our control as a local investment pool. And, you know, to get the, to the 2.5 million and go aggressive in order to mitigate the transfer, I, God, it's $28,000 now. I can't see being really, you know, getting in there aggressive to mitigate that risk. I just like the idea of, you know, that 40, 50,000 a month and just structure it and let the market fluctuate and dollar cost average and ride it out.
Once the state has all the funds, do they manage that so closely that when all the indicators look like it's going to be going into a recession, do they move out of equities and then into bonds more?
There's going to be an investment, hey, that's this board that's going to be set up and there's going to be one from Illinois, I'm trying to remember what it is. There's, there's three from, three from police, three from industry, of which I think the three from industry, one is recommended from IML and the other two are from the governor, I think, is the structure. And they're going to, they're going to be the governing board that will probably then hire investment. You know, they're going to pick out somebody who does, you know, bonds and somebody who does stocks and scatter it around. And they, they may, I see the board potentially just tweaking the, you know, the 60-40. They probably have an overall strategy of 60-40. And if they think the stock market, you know, for the top end, they may be 40% stock, 60% bonds. And if they think it's the other way, you know, but for the most part, I don't, it's, I don't see them trying to time the market in the investment. It's, it's more of a long-term, we need to, they need to have stock for the appreciation and they need to have bonds for the income, you know, protection. And basically put a strategy out and hold to it. And, you know, there's no doubt that with a large fund like that compared to the smaller funds, the cost can be lower, as they can be, not saying they will be, it can be. Hey, it's comical reading the stuff that, you know, all these small funds, you know, they're underperforming, well, because we're limited to 10%. You know, what do you expect? You know, it's made, it's based upon asset mix. And when you say you can only do this and, you know, you know, the opportunity is here and you're here, you're going to do worse than what the market is. But, you know, that's, they're eliminating that, that limit, they're eliminating that limitation by forcing everybody into a pool.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly makes sense to me that we don't want to be, you know, dumping a bunch of money in, you know, at one time to the market. So I don't know, I guess if you guys want to hold off, you can kind of refer this to the, back to the old AOC and we can kind of come up with a plan.
If there's something you can do to dedicate it into a, into a separated fund account.
Yeah.
So that way, you know, here we know we've got it on the side. It's dedicated for this with the intent to fund.
Right.
The liability on a monthly basis and that, I, you capture what, at least my investment philosophy is then with the, with the state managing at their level.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with that? Just kind of refer this back to AOC and come up with the strategy.
Sorry to totally.
Dave, I have one question. Does each municipality fund have like a new fund cost basis? Like, okay, you got in at this date, like, you know, if there's other people that are.
They're, they're going to manage each fund individually as part of a pool. Basically, it's going to become like a big mutual fund.
Okay.
So your dollar, they're, I'm anticipating they're going to, if it is truly an in-kind transfer, which I anticipate they're going to market to market.
Okay.
Which means that some of the CDs, which we're currently holding, may be actually below what the principal balance is on them. If, if they were at a lower rate than what the current market is, actually, I don't think that's the case right now. Some of them might be mark to market a little higher. But I anticipate they'll mark everything to market into their pool and say, okay, you came in with X dollars and they're, from there on then, you're going to share in this pool into the, their risk pool as to the percentage returns.
And for other municipalities, maybe can't, you know, belly up those funds and they come in the pool two or three or five years later, their cost basis is.
It's going to be whatever they put their money in. If they're, okay, hey, you're, it's, hey, and it's an IML model, you know, or IMRF. That's the way I'm reading it anyway. They're using the IMRF model, which my little bit of reading on this was Oakbrook, I think, started the IMRF fund. It was actually started as a voluntary fund initially for smaller municipalities to participate in to gain the benefit of the pool. And then it was in effect taken over by the state later. I think it was 19, it was like the 20s, I think, there was an article I read on it. So the difference there is it started out and basically everybody participated in it and they made it part of the state versus, unless they came and said, you have to. And I was open to the idea of making it an optional thing. And I think the state would have gotten a lot of money in it and it would have worked its way up. And because I would have let, you know, the last 10 years, if it could have participated in a state fund and been a, you know, a 60-40 type investment fund, have at it. You know, it's the mix that makes the money.
All right, any other questions?
Will they provide us with a monthly report as to how much we've gotten? How much it went up, down in our percentage return, do you know?
What's IMRF do? It's monthly or is it just annual, here's what you owe now?
Monthly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be interesting to track that and see.
And then you get an annual bill?
Yeah.
After the audits and actuary, they'll do an actuary. I don't know that, I believe that this is all done, there will no longer be in need for a local actuary report. There might need to be one more, but I think after that it's, it'll all be done in Springfield. Now, the number I saw on that though, it wasn't, I'm trying to remember. They had a percentage that, and with a minimum dollar, and I think the minimum dollar was $5,000. And so, you know, percent of your assets, the minimum $5,000, which was a pretty high number to be up. Because our actuary, between our actuary and our audit is around $5,000. So, and I don't know that eliminates the audit. I think you're still, still going to have to have the audit, wouldn't have to have the actuary.
All right, thanks, David. All right, item two is an ordinance amending various sections of chapter 157 or zoning code of the town zoning order of the code of Peetown concerning regulation of adult use in medical cannabis business establishments and adopt the planning zoning findings of fact. So a couple of weeks ago, the planning zoning committee had a public hearing on this and in your packet you received the findings of fact. And also in the packet is the proposed ordinance that the attorneys have put together. So you want to give us a quick update?
Sure.
Yeah, we had a good discussion of planning and zoning. And ultimately, the recommendation from the commission was the same ordinance that the board had looked at with the exception that they thought it was appropriate to increase the 250 feet from the schools and parks up to 500 feet. So that would be the last time the board has seen it. You as a board are free to agree or disagree with that, but that was their recommendation. So that's how this ordinance is presented.
What was the other distance in there? Was it for the medical?
The existing restriction for cultivation centers, medical cultivation centers, which we can't get rid of, is 2,500.
Okay. So the only, we are only allowing the dispensaries or recreational, right, all the craft?
And medical, you're not, right, you're not doing craft growers and infusers and all that stuff.
Right.
Okay. But you can always add those later.
Right.
And then there's also under the law, although it's not in your codes, 1,500 feet distance requirement between dispensaries themselves.
So the other change in here that I just want to point out to in the, in the code itself was that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that the only zoning that the dispensers are allowed in is B3, I1, and I2. And so the change in the language in the code to allow the medical facilities and those zoning is also whereas before they were only allowed in the industrial zoning. So basically they changed that so that medical, medical would be allowed in the B3 also. Which is, which is how we propose it to you to begin with. But just want to, I just wanted to point that out so you know.
And what the actual applications are, how many licenses are they giving out? I mean, like for Will County, is it only like one or something or it was something, some low number, wasn't it? Or do, are you aware of that?
I don't know initially, so initially for January 1st, it's just the existing dispensaries adding at their current location or potentially a secondary set. As we get further into 2020 and June, others are going to come online that aren't associated with existing dispensaries. And applications for those can start, I think, in like March.
Okay.
So the state is developing numbers and so there's not going to be a bunch at first, but it's anticipated that as, you know, the next couple of years go on, they're going to keep raising.
Keep up.
So, so it's certainly not going to be, if it's only one now, it's certainly not going to be.
It's actually stay that way.
Correct. So I would anticipate that at some point the village will certainly be approached in the next three years.
Okay. What is our B3 zoning?
It is, yeah, I'll get the zoning now, but it's, that is the service, highway service ordinance.
You got the auto oriented.
I don't know, maybe, maybe don't know.
Letting the downtown just be water.
Well, true. Yeah.
It's the dark red, it's like it's, it's just, it's just red. That's B three.
So out on the highway mostly and over by fifty-seven.
Right. So B three is auto oriented service business district.
So then also in there, there's, there's actually, there's no usage on the property, correct, of the marijuana?
Correct.
Right.
Right. Right, so, um, I think when we first talked about it as a board here, uh, there was this kind of gray area under the new state law as to the ability of everybody to allow it at cannabis lounges or in restaurants.
Right.
And that sort of thing. Um, in November, the General Assembly, as part of the veto session, passed the trailer bill on marijuana and clarified that and, and actually scaled that back, so the only places you could do onsite consumption would be either in a dispensary or at a licensed retail tobacco shop, but in either of those cases, the village would have to say, we permit that, so you don't have to take any action to say you prohibit it, although in here we say, uh, we're not, if a dispensary comes, we're not going to allow onsite consumption.
Okay. Any other questions?
With the idea being we don't necessarily want people using it.
Right.
And then.
You have to be at home.
Yes.
You have to be home to do it.
Does this, um, did we adopt the, the sales tax or does that come later or?
So, so the sales tax, um, was originally municipalities weren't going to be allowed to collect it until next September, but the same trailer bill that I just referred to has now moved it up so you can start collecting it in July and you have to file your ordinance by April first.
Okay.
So we're going to get to that in January.
Okay, so that's the intent, so it's a three, up to three percent?
Yeah, it's understood that the village, to my understanding, wants to do the full three percent.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we'll write that back for you.
Great.
And then the, um, this is also the, we had this written into the code that these are special use, these would all require special use permits.
Right, and it doesn't, if you sell the business, the special use doesn't go away then?
Right, we limited, uh, specific language saying if we grant special use for you, it's just for you.
Right.
And keep passing.
Okay.
And so with it being a special use, the idea was we're saying, we're generally okay with it in the zoning districts, but we want to look at that particular location you've chosen on a case-by-case basis, so we can set additional appropriate conditions, so the park being, and very secret, solid.
Now, there was language in there about private preschool, does that include daycare or?
So I was, I was actually looking at that the other day in your code, um, I, I think, and maybe we should address it here, I think the board's intent is that it not include daycare.
Right.
And so, um, and I don't think your code has a specific, your code uses the term nursery school, um, and I, I think, uh, what the board's intention, to my understanding, was we're just talking about like officially sanctioned school, schools as opposed to daycare centers. And if that's everybody's intent or kind of saying that, I think, uh, that, that's clear enough.
The, the, the language they also, we talk about, we talked about, um, the type of facilities that they would be in, which would be standalone facilities, not, um, like strip centers or things like that, so, I don't know if we've ever really discussed that or if that was.
So you can't have some strip mall?
That, that's the language that's in here.
And why is, why is that?
It says something about multi-tenant in a building. Is a strip mall considered one building or is the partitions considered?
Right, I think we would consider that a, a multi-tenant building. What did the planning commission end up saying on that?
Um, there, there was, um, some, there was some discussion, there was, there was some discussion and it kind of went back and forth, um, and there were some that preferred the standalone and there were some that were a little bit more open to it, I think ultimately they, they settled on, um, a standalone building, but.
Yeah, so that was something that I don't know that the board really talked about, but there's something that was in here because I, we carried that over from another community that I worked with, but there's certainly, if, if you think there's appropriate strip mall locations, uh, that might be good dispensary areas, you know, eliminating that restriction would help open up and make it more attractive because you're allowing it more places.
I just wondered, look at the B three zoning, are we really restricting or with the facilities? I mean, it's, there's a couple of those areas are pretty much just car dealerships.
Yeah. And by limiting just certain zoning classifications, you know, is that your intent to limit where it goes or by opening up to more zoning classifications, you do give a potential, uh, business more opportunities, so, you, you know, you have to decide what you would like to do, what your intention is.
Most of those are on the fringe, I mean, if you got down the road ten years, somebody builds a daycare or a park, other, other people grandfathered in that they can stay or they have to pick up a new studio.
It, it says pre-existing.
Hey, remember, we're, we're allowing it, the daycare is not a business, it's just the school officially.
Right.
Oh, parks are included in that?
Parks are.
So you never know where a little park could pop up, yeah, but if it's grandfathered in, then.
So I guess the question is, do we want to allow it in all business zones or just B three, I mean, is there any, you know, strong objection, I mean, you know, to have it in a downtown business, I mean, is that our intent to keep it out of there or?
If you're going to have it, you might as well have it in your tenth district, right?
Right, yeah.
Right? We would have the final say anyway on any location, wouldn't we?
Yeah, but if it, if we don't have it in the ordinance, then we would have to actually write, we'd have to like write a new ordinance, it's not a variance, we'd have to.
And if it's not allowed in that zoning category, it's not allowed in that zoning category.
Right.
So, have, be having it be a special use does not matter, so.
So remember the, uh, the, all the purple areas are the industrial.
Right.
District too, so.
Right, so you can't have it in the, in the purple.
You can.
You can.
Yeah.
The purple and the red.
Isn't the vast majority of the purple on the top, uh, Cleveland Steel?
Yes. Yes, and, and some of the purple towards the south, that chunk over, um, underneath the residential is vacant farmland and, and then the industrial over there to the east is industrial.
Because I know in the past when we talked about adult use, bookstores or whatever, I think we restricted that location to industrial, which there were virtually no sites available, so that was on the purpose of, of moving it to industrial. I'd like to see it opened up anywhere, I mean, in the business district obviously.
Mm-hmm.
I like to think so, especially in the tenth district, a lot of tax revenue going in there.
So we have to get rid of the multi-tenant building, right, ownership.
Right.
Which is, um, again, a little problematic.
Any other questions, Tony?
One, one quick question, the dispensing at five hundred feet versus the cultivation at five times that number, what's the, the thought process between that? Is cultivation?
Well, the, the thought process is the twenty-five hundred is required by state law, so you can't make that less.
Oh, got it, all right.
Where is, uh, there's no state law, uh, for?
No.
Okay. Got it, for the location of that, the only control we would have would be property that's annexed within the village?
For the cultivation center? Yes.
So from what I'm hearing, then, uh, uh, we want to, uh, open it up not only just to B three industrial, but B one, B two as well, and then take out the part about the strip mall or multi-tenant. Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
Okay.
Entertain a motion to approve this ordinance, it would be ordinance nineteen dash four three, um, amending our zoning code to, uh, concerning regulation of adult use and medical cannabis establishments, um, with the, uh, provision, we're going to allow it to be one, two, three, an industrial and strike out the restriction of a, uh, strip mall, not allowing a new strip mall.
Are we going to say strip mall or?
Well, whatever, the legal term.
Right, I was just going to get hold of that.
Yeah. Make a motion?
For a second.
Yeah, and also accepting, adapting the planning zoning findings of fact. Is that all right for you guys?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Maroka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes. Okay, next, uh, ordinance approving a side yard setback variation for a garage at four oh four North Conrad Street, uh, adoption of planning zoning findings of fact. Is the background?
Sure, so on November twenty-sixth, a public hearing was held to hear the case, um, at four oh four North Conrad Street, um, there's an existing garage there and they wanted to remove that structure and utilize the same, um, concrete slab to build a new garage, um, however, they had a, um, a setback problem, um, so you need, um, so the, they needed a ten-foot setback, um, but it was on six feet from the house, they need a four-foot setback barriers, so, um, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard the case and they made a positive, uh, recommendation to the board, um, with some conditions, uh, the conditions being that, um, four, three conditions, um, that they utilize siding and asphalt shingles, um, on the roof, on the roof of the new garage that would match the existing house, and then they put some gutters up, um, on this, on the new garage so that they would avoid any drainage issues onto the neighboring property. Um, they also, um, required an inspection by the building inspector of the, um, the slabs so that it would, uh, it would, it, uh, be suitable for the new structure. Uh, unfortunately, the, that has not taken place yet and will take place on tomorrow, but what, um, they're looking for is that the footings are, to code, and, and are forty, forty-two inches deep, um, so I'm waiting to hear back if that is the case, um, but it is a condition of approval, so we'll make sure that that is the case and if they, if they are not forty-two inches deep, we'll make sure that they get, uh, they get dug and bored as such.
Okay. Any questions?
For garage, can it possibly be a slab?
It is, but as long as the footings are appropriate, but a, according to code, no, not a floating slab, no.
No?
No.
I think that was the determination between a large shed and a garage.
Right.
There's no questions, uh, entertain a motion to approve, uh, this would be ordinance nineteen dash four four, approving the side yard setback variation at four oh one North Conrad?
Four oh four.
Four oh four, I'm sorry, North Conrad and, um, adopting the planning zoning findings of fact.
I watched it.
Second, moved by trustee Maroka, seconded by trustee Jones.
Maroka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And?
Yes. Next is an ordinance for the levying and assessing of two thousand nineteen taxes for the village of Peatone, and again, if you want to go over that?
I won't have too much to get into depth with other than this is what we're going to be asking the residents to, to tax them for, um.
So this is an annual thing that we have to do?
Our, our annual thing, what we have to do, what we're allowed to do by law based on our tax cap, so we can only go a certain amount, um, over CPI, um, so we're going to go one point one percent over CPI this year and, um, based on, um, what our building has been over time, uh, Marcie's kind of gave you guys the, the memo and, and gone over a little bit about it, what our building has been, so we, this is kind of a little bit of a guessing game, we don't want to go too far, ask for too much over CPI or county will kick it back to us, so, um, this is our best guess and it's, we think we were hitting the nail on the head here based on previous years.
Questions?
Just because we pass it doesn't necessarily mean we would tax that much, right?
What's that?
You pass this every year, but that doesn't mean you have to tax that much, it's on a need basis.
Right. So we're asking for a total of all funds of five hundred fifty-six thousand.
How does that compare to last year, the year before?
It's similar.
Any other questions? If not, uh, entertain a motion, this would be ordinance nineteen dash four five for, uh, this would be for the levying and assessing of the two thousand nineteen taxes for the village of Peatone. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Parker.
Jones?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
So, sorry?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, item C is a resolution, uh, allocating the two thousand nineteen tax levy to individual funds of the village, uh, in the property tax extension limitation law as amended, so this is, uh, goes along with the ordinance that was passed, correct?
Right. You'll see that there's, there's certain funds we have to allocate these funds to.
Questions on this at all?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Ham.
We have Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Maroka?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes, and that was resolution nineteen dash R one three. There is no questions from the press, they are not present, we do have, uh, some announcements, um, so the, uh, Christmas in the Village is this Saturday, December fourteenth, I encourage everybody to, uh, participate in that, uh, there's activities going on throughout the day, starting at seven o'clock in the morning and, uh, ending up with the lighting. and ending up with the lighting parade at 5:00 PM. Couple announcements also, the village hall will be closed, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Next year is a vehicle sticker year and also dog tags. The vehicle stickers will be due March 31st, and the dog tags will be due February 28th. The statements for those will be going out in January. Leaf and branch pickup is done for the season. So, you know, if you have some branches on your pathway, you know, pull them in until springtime. And then, you wanted to mention about the litigation we had on the.
Right.
That abandoned house.
Right. So, if you recall, we started North Hickory, where we have kind of a shell of a structure. And we submitted a complaint. I just want to give you an update on that. So, it's kind of wide open. It's a hazard, it's nuisance. And we've asked that we be aggressive on it and take care of it. But we did submit the summons and the complaint on November 13th, and we haven't had a response yet. So, if we don't have a response by the 16th, then the attorney will file a motion for default. So, we'll keep you posted what happens with that. But it still hasn't gotten boarded up, unfortunately. We're still waiting for this action to be addressed so we can get the go-ahead for that. So, we're waiting for that. So, hopefully, I'll have some more information for you from after the 16th so we can get the boarding taken care of, and then we can get even some more outcome after that.
Is the owner local? Do you know?
I don't know if he still is or not. He used to be, but I'm not sure if he still is.
If we get the motion for default, then we can board it up.
Right.
And then, what, and if nothing still happens.
That's what we want to talk to the judge about. Because I understand that just boarding it up is not a solution. And then, I got that message loud and clear from the last time we talked. So, hopefully, we can have the judge understand that, that we want some further remedy. So, when we submitted the complaint, you know, it does say demolition. I mean, the N-D-L-B-L is not boarding it up. That's not going to solve the problem. So, hopefully, we can get some, and I don't think it won't happen overnight that we can, you know, either make him fix it up. I mean, that's going to be what we're saying, you know, can we have him finish it? Or, you know, if he doesn't finish it by this time, you know, does, you know, is demolition in cards? Or what can we make happen so that the outcome is that we don't have an abandoned structure sitting in the middle of a neighborhood?
Do you know when he began that construction?
Oh, two plus years ago?
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Sort of legal fees that we're incurring, are we leaning against? Can we mean those against the property?
Yes, yes.
Do the real estate taxes we pay?
I don't know. I don't know. I'll ask the attorney. It's not you, it's not him.
But a couple of things. So, if he does not appear, the judge will ask the village, "What do you want to do?" And so, the initial request is we want to board it up. And then, the board can talk about where we want to go from there.
Yeah.
If he comes in, then it's a different case. The judge will look at him and say, "What are you doing about this?"
Right.
And then, just to trustee Bowden's point, that under the section of the Illinois municipal code that this was brought, you get a super priority, you need to roll your costs and attorney's fees so that, you know, when the property is sold, you guys can pay it first.
Right.
Or just sell it, you know?
All right. Any other discussion from the board members? Not entertain a motion to adjourn? Second? Moved by trustee Marotka, seconded by trustee Ham.
Marotka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Thank you.